To call to order this Board of Education regular meeting Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven oh two. Can I have a rule call?
This is Theodore, here. This is McPhillips, here. This is Ervah Barnfield, here. This is Deck, here. This is Lala, here. Mr. Verardi, here. Mr. Trabuzio, here.
Do you have any form? Let's stand for the flag. Let's sign the votes.
By July, June, and December of the United States of America, it's the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in any justice.
Molly, would you read the mission statement?
The mission of Giles School District is inspiring educational excellence in an appropriate environment.
Celebrate the success.
So today Giles School is celebrating our seventh and eighth grade writing class that our students, so we have the eighth grade students here along with the teacher, Mrs. Kruger. If you would like to all stand up, I'll come over here. So this class is a semester class, so seventh grade gets this course for the first semester while eighth grade is in C. And then they switch and then eighth grade gets writing and seventh grade goes to C. So Mrs. Kruger worked with our eighth grade students and what they did is they were able to come up with a little theater that they came up with and they did all the work. So I'm going to turn it over now to Mrs. Kruger who will explain.
Um, I, so I started with eighth graders in January twenty-seven. And so they had been working in LA reading the play The Diary of Anne Frank. So I thought a great way to transition to art class is to, now that they know how to read a script, let's write a script. So the students got to choose their own groups and they got to choose what type of play they would like to write. And then we worked together to do the format with stage directions, summaries and we made play bills too to represent their plays. And enough from me, but here are the kids.
I think it was good to do this assignment because it helped us to learn to be more creative and think about new things to do in a short amount of time.
Can you tell us your name?
Oh, I'm Avery.
Um, I'm Luciana Franco and I think this play was very helpful because we learned to get over obstacles and challenges in a short amount of time. Because like writing a play all on your own is not very easy and we had short enough time to do it.
I'm Neet and we all got to brainstorm a bunch of ideas and be creative and imaginative and we all got to be together as a team.
Um, I'm Lisa and we got to work together in creating our own play and we got to incorporate people that we wouldn't even incorporate.
I'm Isabella Maza and I think that is a good opportunity to learn how to write a play and be with our friends.
I'm Max Safran. I think it was a very creative way and we got to express our ideas and make whatever we want and socialize with others.
So not only did they write the script, they also made props, some used sound effects and then they actually had to present it in front of the class. So it was a very, the project took about two and a half weeks for us to from start to finish. So it was very proud of them. They all worked really hard and as you can see through the play bills, they have all different types of genres of plays. We have mysteries, we have comedies, we have some drama, a little, you know, so it was a really fun experience for all of us.
And we have a video that we're going to show you.
Oh my gosh, guys, we get the sky!
Wow!
Guys, what time are we going back to the house?
This is going to be Alice and yes, we will, so when you want to go.
Awesome.
Guys, where's the list?
So we just showing you a very short one minute clip of the video of what they did from start to finish. And then we placed some of the bills on here for you and then we provided some for you. So we just wanted to highlight this program and share this with you. Really excited about it. They're doing amazing and wonderful things. So we thank you all. And now we'd like to take a picture with the Board of Education and our writing, our students. So the board, if you'd like to come on up?
Just want to say hello.
No, she gave her turn.
No.
No.
It is not, it is not.
They actually kidnapped the wrong person.
Yeah, that's not, that's not right.
That's why it's not happening.
It's not, it's not.
Yeah, it was supposed to be one of us.
Easy.
No, I think. Hide or let them everything. Mr. Ford. Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Of course, you are welcome to take a seat for the rest of the meeting, but we do understand that you need to leave. So thank you, Mr. Beatty, for talking about our class. That is only our second year of, this is our second year of offering it. You recall, we started fifth and sixth grade writing also, just so that we can give special time for writing because sometimes when it sticks with the LA, it can be lost a little bit, so just great. Thank you very much, Mr. Beatty.
May I? Um, to extra items, consider whether to include the agenda as presented.
Nope.
As presented, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Maria, Molly, who calls, please?
Um, this is Lala.
Yes.
This is Deck.
Yes.
This is Theodore.
Yes.
This is McPhillips.
Yes.
This is Ervah Barnfield.
Yes.
Mr. Verardi.
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio.
Yes. Motion. Motion passes. Recognition of visitors, thank you. Correspondents, is there?
No.
Public participation? Yeah. Uh, for requests, none, and if there was, as published in the website, you can read it. Administrative reports, Superintendent Trubusik?
My report is in my discussion list.
Very good, thank you. Special education, Mr. Masterson?
Yeah, so just two really quick things. I really wanted to thank the administrative team, kind of while I went down to Champaign, Illinois for the I-Double-A-C conference. Lots of interesting conversations about various topics in special education attendance, homebound instruction, even artificial intelligence in special education. So I really appreciate this team for helping support while I was away. And then also a recent success that we had was we had scoops and stories for our Tiger Tots, our little preschools. So that was fun for our whole families to come and get some ice cream and have some great story time for our littlest Tigers. So that's my report.
Thank you. Uh, building reports, Giles School, Mr. Beatty?
I'd like to highlight two things today. First of all, tomorrow, our seventh grade junior varsity girls' basketball team will be participating in the Leiden Nord Athletic Conference Championship Game at Westleydon High School tomorrow at six thirty PM. So we're, hopefully we can, we can fill Westleydon. They will be versing Mannheim School. Mannheim's always a tough, tough competition, so good luck to our Lady Lions. And then my second is I'd like to congratulate to the members of the Giles Concert Band who earned a Superior Division One honor, the highest honor possible, at the Illinois Grade School Music Association District Seven Organizational Contest this past Saturday at River Grove School. The Giles Band members performed along with eleven other junior high bands from the suburbs. The band members were responsible for preparing three works in contrasting styles that were judged by three band clinicians in the areas of intonation, tone quality, balance, blend, interpretation, and stage presence. The students were awarded first place medals that they will wear on their uniforms at concerts. A permanent award will hang in the Giles Band Room. Great job, Concert Band. So thank you.
Thank you. Lee School, Dr. Reddick?
Thank you. So our students have been enjoying a legal unit and they've been participating in during our C-class with Mrs. Chitelli, our C teacher. It's been really fun to see them tinkering around with that, doing a little bit of coding, getting things to move and seeing that come together has been really exciting. And also just wanted to highlight that we have IAR testing coming up for third and fourth grade, March twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, as well as after spring break, April ninth, ten, and eleventh. Just wanted to share out those two pieces of information tonight. Thank you.
Discipline reports, Giles, the school is?
And I will take it, thank you. We had one in-school suspension in violation of Board Policy seven colon one ninety, number nine and twenty-one. We had one in-school suspension in violation of Board Policy seven colon one ninety, number five, seven, nine, and twenty-one. We had one out-of-school suspension in violation of Board Policy seven colon one ninety, number five, seven, nine, and twenty-one. We had one in-school suspension in violation of Board Policy seven colon one ninety, seven, nine, and twenty-one. We had one out-of-school suspension in violation of Board Policy seven colon one ninety, number seven, nine, and twenty-one. We had one in-school suspension in violation of Board Policy seven colon one ninety, number nine, ten, and twenty-one. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Lee, Mrs. Eretz?
No report.
Thank you. Board committees, nothing of education, nothing, we don't already review monthly, regular Board meeting, Board Policy Development, I'm sure Superintendent Trubusik will address that in discussion. Building grounds, kind of weeks, we're going to be discussing architectural funds and I'm sure the game will be coming up, a discussion. Behavioral intervention, nothing to report, negotiations and human resources. We had our first session with lead and we'll discuss enclosed session. Finance, nothing new since passing the budget last month. Communications, nothing currently report. Norris Park District, I understand the committee met with, the committee met earlier tonight, six PM.
Yeah, sure. Myself, Maria, Michelle, and Eretz met with Norris Park and our discussions continued about potentially using our fields for some of their programs. So we'll talk about it in close, but in trade-off, they said they would maintain our fields, cut the grass, get that one field on at Lead looking good again, get some dirt and some lines for them to play. They're talking about T-ball, but we also did mention about soccer, having home games again, possibly losing Norris Park, so that's up for their, we'll look at their schedule, but they seem like they would accommodate if their fields are available, but we'll talk about the contract in enclosed and more to close. It was a good meeting, I thought.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it, right?
Good, thank you. Discussion items.
Thank you. Today in consent, I have the Students and Parent Handbook for approval. We haven't seen this in a couple of months. Basically, what we're adding to it is some language about Google and Google has asked us to include this in our Students and Parent Handbook, questions about like how Google uses personal information, how it's collected, what information Google will disclose on a child's personal information and all opportunities in this section, this new section that went into the Students and Parent Handbook. The student handbook, I'm sorry, the Handbook Committee is meeting tomorrow, it's a committee of the teachers and we are running through, we're going through the Students and Parents' Handbook to see what kind of updates we might need to anticipate, actually changes or laws and such. We may not get all of that until May, so we'll probably look at one more update of this Handbook in June, fifteen. But you know what, we're always looking at updating it Monday. We've had a delay in registration, as you know. The Board did approve the registration date of starting on March first. However, we've run into a problem on the Power School portal for returning students. So right now, our hope is March twenty-fourth. I will send out information on Friday to families. We do also have six dates set up for preschool and kindergarten registration. That is done in person, preschool and kindergarten. Preschool because we do need to meet with parents regarding the TFA grant. There are some things that need to be completed by parents in order to qualify. Kindergarten, we need to get a deposit for full day or fees paid for curriculum depending on what option the family chooses. And then we also have some dates for new students to start registering for twenty-five, twenty-six. So we're going to be in fast mode on twenty-five, twenty-six as soon as we start registration. We'll load these as soon as we start registration and just keep moving forward. Preschool calendar is in your Board packet today. Couple of things are different about the preschool calendar. Your typical calendar for a school year is a hundred and seventy-six days plus four institute days, which is a hundred and eighty days. The preschool calendar is a hundred and sixty-five student attendance days. And those are include things like field trips or outside or inside trips are all included in that hundred and sixty-five days and the length of the day must be two point five hours. What we also have at the preschool calendar are screening dates and home visit dates, which are not things that are in the typical school calendar. So that's why the preschool calendar is a little bit different. These are things that are mandated by the preschool for all branch. There are also some professional development dates where the teachers are required to have professional development and the students have not been in session. So just a little bit different of a calendar. We currently run this calendar now, nothing is different as far as the breaks and things like that, but when there are screening dates, at least once a month, preschool is not in session when the rest of the school is in session for screening or home visits because the teachers do go on home visits. Policy tonight, we were going to review the five hundreds, but we have decided to put that off until April. So today we are only looking at those three policies in the four hundreds, passing them on second grade, which is cleaning up the extra spaces on four colon eleven, adding local law enforcement enforcement on four colon one ninety, and then on four colon one seventy-five, just matching our current practice with running things through RAPR. And then we'll put the five hundreds out right now. We should see next month in April, one eighteen from press should be coming out. Probably we'll just hand you that in paper next month. We'll have a couple of months to read it, go through it and pass it on first and second grade. We are expecting a lot of language changes from the federal government now pulling down into one eighteen on what they say the states. So that will be an interesting read once we receive that. Derek and I have been communicating and meeting with the Village of Norwich regarding some of the asphalt work. I think we have a meeting on Thursday with their new buildings and ground individual. We've been talking about the work at Giles, Long Ormeal, and Cortlandt out here at Lead. They are also going to be doing some work on our spring break, so like two weeks from now on the sidewalks that are, that are packed in the front here at Lead. They're going to be replacing those sidewalks that Giles refined, we walked them on, they didn't need to be replaced, but they will be replacing some concrete here during spring break. We have a form of cars and they know as well. They were able to put a light on in the Lead parking lot, so we leaving today, probably take a look at that. So out of the Lead parking lot, above the parking lot, now there is a ray light, which will light up actually a pretty good amount of the Lead parking lot. There is another spot a little further now towards Lawrence that we'd like to add that ray light to, that'll light up like the bus stop area and that back part of the parking lot. But it definitely is a much improved thing with the Village support. And then we're continuing to discuss some parking options. One of the things that has come up in our meeting is when we talk about putting in ADA spots at, or in ADA spot at Giles, the way that it's graded over on the side there is not appropriate for an ADA spot. So they, their engineer was working on trying to grade that a little flatter, so which obviously will be a lot of digging out all up and fixing that. So that's still a conversation that we're having on Thursday. I'm sure that would be a big part of our conversation. So we're very thankful of the Village, they've been very supportive and we've enjoyed working with them so far. As Mr. Trabuzio mentioned earlier, we are continuing an architect search. We have ten firms that have submitted their qualifications. So at this point, the committee, which consists of a representative from NSF, a representative from the Board, which is Mr. Trabuzio, and then committee of Board, Derek and I, we're going through all the qualifications. We have a meeting on March twenty-sixth in the evening. We're going to rank the qualifications based on the rubric. Then we're going to interview the top three to five firms from that ranking. And then April twenty-third, we'll do full day interviews with those three to five firms. So thankfully, Mr. Trabuzio and Mrs. Tanny, who is coming from NSF, are grateful enough to join us on that day during the day. And then on May twentieth, we should have a recommendation to the Board of Education on our final firm. It's a very exciting spell. The Giles Infrastructure Grant has been through its final approval. We received our first installment of five thousand fifty dollars. I actually have a copy of the canceled check. I would love to see it all. Our second installment has been approved, so this is now a monthly installment for six thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. We put through a reimbursement every month if we have a reimbursement. So right now, those are both on the installation of the alarm locks at Giles. The other areas, we're going to kind of be on hold right now and pulling additional funds out of this grant because we need an architect to be with us to start spending some of the rest of the dollars. As you might recall, the panels, the electric panels are in that grant, the ceiling at Giles is in that grant, and some other areas of the landfill area at Giles. So we'll need an architect to be able to assist us with those plans. So once we have an architect, we'll be able to continue spending that infrastructure grant. Just a quick follow-up and future reminder, April first is our local election. We have three Board of Education seats that are available and we've got final word, that two candidates are running. So the Board is going to fill an open position, which we'll go back to what our policy is when we have an open position. And we will, we would have to put out information and conduct interviews for someone to fill that open position, but that all would not happen until after our May first reorganization meeting. So on May first, we actually would have two meetings set for that evening. We'll do a final meeting of the Board that we are sitting in right now. We'll end that Board, we'll renew, we'll then start up the new Board with the new Board members tomorrow. At that point, we do officer selection committees and then we also set the calendar for the next two years. So start thinking about if we want to change anything on the calendar, otherwise I will probably propose Tuesdays and Sundays, not on the third, third Tuesday, unless the Board would like to change our dates. Eight o'clock? Eight o'clock?
I was thinking more than third.
And that is my reporting.
Thank you. Consent agenda, I need a motion to approve fourteen A through fourteen A. That a motion?
Motion.
Lauren and who? Maria? Any discussion on any of you? Okay, rule call, please.
This is Ervah Barnfield.
Yes.
This is Lala.
Yes.
This is Theodore.
Yes.
This is McPhillips.
Yes.
This is Deck.
Yes.
Mr. Verardi?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes. Motion passes. Board comments.
Quick question, how's the lunch going?
Amazing. I will say that parents do need to remember to put money into Pushpoint because that needs to get buckled. So, and parents do receive an email every time a student takes a lunch. But I mean, Mr. Beatty sent me a picture yesterday of the students all lined up at Giles and you had a hundred kids get lunch.
Oh gosh, yeah, we've gone through over a hundred lunches. It's amazing. The line is, it's awesome.
Oh, good.
They love it. Kids will come up to me and be like, Mr. Beatty, this is awesome, delicious.
Oh, good.
Yeah, today was taco, tacos, they love, or nachos. So they loved it.
We would have to get about thirty-five kids picked up lunch at Giles, so last, as you can see from our payments here for just the two months to organic life, I'm paying ten thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. If you look at gourmet gorilla, that was for a whole month, four thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars. So how does that pay us? Do you pay, what's in there? So according to the state of Illinois, yes, parents can rack up a bill up to five hundred dollars for lunch before we can stop feeding the students, which is not ideal either way. We don't want to stop feeding students if they need food, we want to make sure we give them food. So we've been reaching out to families, just reminding them that, you know, fees in general should have been paid by now, but just making sure that they paid their fees. We're going to be loading next year's fees very soon, so.
So the ten thousand that we're showing, that is not, that's everything that we spent, so whatever we gave in Pushpoint or paid with that as well, so it's not what the?
Absolutely.
Okay, I got you.
So it's also, oh, sorry, I'm coming in here. It's just a question. It's also, we then have to pay for anyone who was free or reduced and then get reimbursement statement.
Right, right, right. I was just curious if that was true.
How is that work? When they go get their lunch, they get their badge scanned and what's that like?
I can't say it's easy to put money into the account.
It's not easy?
It is.
Oh, we're good.
It is easy and every time your child takes a lunch, you've got an email stating it and you're running ballots. So it's working well?
Yeah, we're very excited about it. We are hoping that we can extend it into another year because currently, right now, we're in emergency contract till the end of this year and not have to go through a formal bid process. So we're, stay tuned.
And what other schools love using it?
Currently, right now, we are on contract with Union Ridge, with Canoyer, and with Rojmont. Bridgewood High School also uses it, but they're not on a contract. They're a company that didn't, they never used to come this far north. They were definitely much more south, but now they're reaching out to newer areas, so why do you know?
It probably works well for, I have a few schools in the same area. It's probably the business model.
Oh, you're pretty, you know, first year having good results and like people be nice and see if they're like, do offer, you know, that if you sell X amount of meals, you know, there's volume based and if people commit to the month, eventually they know what they're buying, maybe a discounted people, they give, they don't, they can just do it.
So the Department of Education in Illinois runs how much money we can charge for lunch. That, so when we have a contract, they have to approve that contract? They set how much money, a lot of people.
Okay, we're going against it.
Yeah, we just have no control over that whatsoever. This is a heavy monitored through the Illinois State Board of Education.
Thank you.
I think because of we're the national school lunch company, if we If we weren't part of the National School Lunch Program, you know, I think we would have a little more um flexibility with it, but we are part of the National School Lunch Program. We have, ah gosh, I'm going to say three hundred and fifty each and four hundred kids are qualified for pretty much.
Yeah. Probably just maybe a little bit cheaper.
Actually, I think that's like four hundred and twenty-five kids.
Do we need other board comments? Any else? No? I need a motion to adjourn to the session to discuss the appointment, appointment, concentration, discipline, recording, or dismissal of specific employees, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more of the class's employees to purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be fired, and review of closed session amendments. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Lauren?
Second.
Mary? Rule call, please.
Mrs. Erba Barnfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Blala?
Yes.
Mr. Garrity?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes, the motion passes. We need proposed session at seven forty-five. Okay, we are now back in open session at nine twenty now. Moving on to personnel action items. Seventeen A through seventeen D. Can I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Amanda Fanning? Rule call, please.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mrs. Erba Barnfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Blala?
Yes.
Mr. Garrity?
Yes.
Mr. Trabuzio?
Yes. Motion passes. Board meeting reflection. Okay. Um I need a motion to adjourn this meeting at nine thirty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing day, the meeting is now adjourned.